Okay. Six o'clock, all needing the orders. You seen this got the roll, we can dispense with the pledge if there's no objections.
No objection.
Okay. Moving right on, I would need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second the motion.
Jase, did you want to add something to this?
Yeah, if I could add something to the business to be added.
Thank you. He's got some stuff he would like to discuss.
I second the motion with the new business from, from Jase.
Mike?
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close passes. Old business, city building remodeling and rebuilding, I think that's kind of obvious.
You like that?
Yeah, that one's.
Maybe I'll have to edit that. Yeah, in here too. Um, I'm glad Mike made it back, so things are still moving along, we have um, another meeting for both committees tomorrow, um, just a reminder. Hi Joe, come on in, Steven wants to talk, um, and he's gonna have an electrical engineer, this time to go through that portion of the plans. So, uh, I've got a one o'clock for the liquor store, at the liquor store, for that committee, scheduled, and then a two o'clock for the public works, public safety building here at city hall. So hopefully, Steve said he didn't need a lot of time, but he wanted to meet with both groups, so.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock here. For the. Public works, yeah. Um, otherwise, things are moving along on the financial side, I'm still working with, role development and USDA and Gale, um, Steve needs to get the architectural preliminary plans ready for USDA's approval, that's one of the things that will kind of be on a timing mechanism of the, of the funding element that we've discussed in some of the committees before, so the sooner we get that into Angela Bakavoy from USDA, the sooner that will move forward. That's probably the biggest, biggest chunk of, um, the documents that they need. Um, there is a public hearing on February eighth prior to the regular council meeting, just for public comments on the buildings, and that again is only on the public works, public safety side because liquor stores and enterprise fund. So if we're taking any comments about that, we only really need to field the general fund side, but if there's concern or chatter about the liquor store, we can, we can fund that as well. I do have new funding schedules, um, with the updated numbers from Todd Hagan, and I'm crunching some numbers, and I'm gonna review those tomorrow.
And I would stress that everybody remembers that the public hearing is also part of, it's state statute that we have to have it even to borrow the money.
Right. Um, Max, that's all I have on that unless anybody else on the board has other questions. Mike, you want, you guys have anything else you want to add?
Oh, I worked with, uh, Joe, can't remember his name really this morning on some design layout stuff on the property itself out there. Other than that, you've covered everything that is up to date by now.
Yep, whirrings are supposed to happen this week, what are the whirrings? Yep. That'll really give us a good idea as to where that public works, public safety building can be located on that, on that piece of parcel.
That one's huge.
Right.
Is it going by the recycling?
Nope, it would be located north of Anderson's at the end of industrial drive, north of, north of the BICAP building, the Head Start building, where the old stop, JC Foff Soppel Fields used to be. It's a big enough piece of land.
Then the city already owned it.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else got any questions? You might notice some changes in city hall, I'm moving forward with some updates, some well-needed updates, the ceiling is almost done. Paige and I put a lot of sweat equity into the ceiling in the last two and a half weeks, and, uh, Crunden's redid the lighting, and it makes an enormous difference, an enormous difference. I didn't realize how dark the front and the back office it really was until the lights were changed, and they're a flat panel LEDs, so they're no taller than the actual grid work itself.
Same ones they put in my house.
They're amazing, and the, um, the electricity, three of these poles equals one of the other ones. So hopefully I'll see some drop in our electric bill too. We're gonna do some painting, um, the ADA door, I have a fix for that, and I'm gonna get that door replaced. So, also, per recommendation, and the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust has asked me a couple of times, it should be a push-out door for fire emergencies, and it's not, so we're gonna switch that, so it's a push-out emergency ADA door too, just like the front door. Yeah, so pardon the mess, while we do it, we might shut down another day or two, but I'm hoping to have the painting done at least by the next council meeting, so.
You're gonna need artwork.
Well, we have a bunch to put back up. I just don't know where we're all gonna put it, I, the big flat map that was between those two bay windows is going back up, that's one of the real old ones from like nineteen twelve.
Speaking of the windows too, were you gonna do the tinting?
Uh, I do have a quote from Clarity Glass as well to tint the windows, um, instead of putting, uh, window treatments back up with the amount of sun that they bring in and the heat from it, the, when we pulled the blinds down, the clips just disintegrated. So I do have a quote to have the tint, the windows tinted, which will help with heat and cooling in both winter and summer. There'll be a mirrored reflection on the outside during the day, we will still be able to see out, but then during night when we're having meetings like this, people will still be able to see in, but I think it'll be a really big update.
Kind of like the door and the door.
Yes.
That's exactly what it is.
Yes. Yep.
I think you should put some, paint shelving across here like glass and footbacks in it.
There's one in every group, yeah.
Took me two years to get rid of those things.
I think we should display some of the wonderful art from high school.
Oh, that are in the ceiling tiles? You're the second person to ask me if I'm gonna have the kids come and paint these tiles, I'll tell you the amount of hours that I put in these ceilings, no one's touching them unless they break and I gotta put anyone up. No, I think we saved, um, a ton of money, we painted the grid work. Um, the tiles cost under a thousand dollars and we overbought, so we just sent eighty tiles back, eighty tiles back. So if a new grid work drop ceiling with lighting costs fifteen to twenty grand, this is costing us less than six. And most of that is all the electric, of electrical.
I missed a little spot right there.
You should have seen us rip down the old stuff, Nick, it was a mess, because the old ceiling tiles were like a, um, like a vinyl, and then the inside was all fiberglass. Paige and I were just a mess on Wednesday night last week, it was not fun. At all.
I don't know if somebody had painted the grid line with the ceiling tiles out, so then they like, they glued together.
That's what we did. We won't.
Just remember that when you go to move them, because then it like, they tear, and then you gotta get it right back in the perfect spot, so like do a box cutter or something like that.
I should have told Bill Crunden, cause he came in on, uh, the holiday to do the lighting when we weren't open, that it didn't matter if, um, he ripped the old tiles down, but he had all of his team like, cutting him with a blade to access the lights very carefully, and hindsight twenty twenty, I should have just ripped them down for him, but I, you know, you just don't know until you start into something like this.
Oh, it just brooms out there, yes.
Oh, he did a remarkable job, I was so thrilled, and he's still working on finding, a light to replace the existing one above the steps in the front door, cause that hasn't been lit for a while, and he's going to retrofit the one in the entryway to something similar to this flat panel, but only like maybe a one-by-one. So we'll have some more lighting in the front door, which is duly needed as well. So, yeah. Happy, happy, be able to see in here for a change.
And the pond has their furnaces.
Oh, yay!
That's what I.
And they're on?
They are on. So we should start seeing a real.
Reduction in the winter.
Reduction in the electric bill at the pond.
Was the pond electric previous?
Yes.
Yes, they have a, they have an off-peak system, they have a floor radiant floor heat. Yeah.
So.
And it's a pretty big electric bill in the winter time, and they try not to turn it on until they absolutely need to, because there's no turning it off after that, it's just too warm.
We've got half of town north is on electric plenum, or it's not radiant that part, but then the other half is propane forced air, and electric bills like, hmm, how much is, how much could I save by switching to propane?
Yeah.
And then, you know, looks like it'd be a couple grand to get a propane boiler, well, depending on who you talk to.
Right.
Five or six to get a propane boiler in there, but I'd like to get one like I have in my house, because, you know, eighty bucks a month can save or something like that.
This whole building is electric heat.
Okay, wow.
Used to have, um, fuel oil downstairs, and now it's all electric, so it's not very cost-effective, I'd like to change that at some point too, if this place will stay here for the next twenty years. Grandfather's somebody else in, anyway, enough of that about that.
I just, I just like, you guys might wanna know that we are, that we should compare. You know, when we get a couple months down the road.
We have a couple months down the road.
See, you know, what last year's electric bill for the pond was versus this year, you know, January.
Yeah, but this year's been like unseasonably warmer.
So far.
Yeah, and, yeah.
It ain't over yet though.
I get it though.
You don't have, you can go January to January, it hasn't been that, it's been cold, but it hasn't.
You know, honestly, I'd be interested in the difference, just because, like I was talking to Kelly Juleson last week about what it would cost to put in a propane boiler or whatever, just because I've got electric with a fuel oil backup on, you know, the part where Kurt's apartment is kinda thing, so.
Sure.
Like eight hundred bucks a month, electric bill, it's just like you look at it, it's just like, ah!
It's crazy, and you know your lighting is not doing it, I mean.
Cause we've replaced all the lighting in there, so it's all probably the same size as these, where it's all LED and whatever.
Yeah, I can't imagine what, what possible.
I'd just put it away. Auto pay it.
Anything else?
I think I said it all.
Good. What the heck are the trucks?
One's outside.
There's one outside, alright, picked up from Duluth today. The other one hopefully will be here by the end of the week.
And they're delivering that one.
They're gonna deliver us that one, so we'll get to check it out afterwards, that's it, we get to check it out afterward.
Now, is this the one with just the plow, or is this have the sander in it?
This has the plow and the sander.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I gotta go over a few things tomorrow, check the build sheet, cause there's a couple things that aren't on it, but I think we're supposed to be on it.
Okay.
But I'll go over that tomorrow, get it figured out.
I have those, um, those sales from Bob, so.
It lists everything that was supposed to be on it.
Yeah. At least for pricing, something I could do with, with GM Financial, so we'll get those.
And I can do finally come off the.
What's that?
Can finally come off the old business.
Yes, yes, we don't have to keep saying it. I look back and it's been just over a year since you started this.
One said government went fast.
Been a really long process.
But at least, at least we stayed on it.
A pesky pandemic, I tell ya.
I, I don't know what's blamed on it, I'm just happy it's over, good.
So what do you mean, like, the summer things that you done with it, you ain't gonna have to take it back to home then?
No, if, if they're not on it, I need to double-check to make sure that they were supposed to be on the build sheet, if they're not, it's just gonna have to be a matter of, we're not paying as much as what we were gonna pay, type of deal. It's nothing that is going to really change the usability of the truck, it's just a few things that I thought were supposed to be on that, yeah. Which would make a difference, I mean, we're not gonna pay for something that didn't come.
Exactly.
So, other than that, I got to, uh, set up a few things in the cab that, the place to put the plow and the sander in, didn't get to for some reason, when I showed up over there, so I gotta mount a few things and run some wiring and stuff, but we'll get that done.
So this truck replaced your truck, or, or the?
This one replaced the one I was driving.
The seventeen?
Yep. And then the other one that'll be here at the end of the week is the exact same pickup, it just won't have sander. The plow that was on the seventeen will now go on to the other one that's coming. The two plows aren't interchangeable from pickup to pickup, because this new one that we got is, uh, has the down pressure, so it's able to scrape and peel a little bit better. You can technically, I mean, I guess they're somewhat interchangeable, as in you can hook it up to the front, but you won't be able to use the down pressure, if, if you were to take the old one and put onto this pickup, you've got the controller for the down pressure, but you won't be able to actually apply it, because it's on the plow part itself. But we can still hook them up, move them around, do things like that, it's compatible that way. And that, it drove nicely over here, rides good for a heavy duty one time.
Fit more in the back then too, because you didn't get this to the pickup.
Yeah, it's anything in the back right now with the sander in there.
Oh yeah, that's right. But they're longer boxes, right?
Uh, this one is longer than the other one that I was driving, that was a four-door crew cab with a short box.
Right.
This is now a, a regular cab with a long box. The replacement for the old pickup is essentially the same, just seventeen years newer. And you're not falling through the floorboards.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's nice when you don't have to Fred Flintstone in the room.
We'll have to work on licensing as well.
Yeah, I've got a temp license on this one. We'll get the rest figured out.
I can't remember, Mike, um, did we talk about a liner or some kinda insert for that sander, so it doesn't destroy the box?
Uh, both pickups, when I ordered them, I got them with, uh, the.
Rhino lining.
Box liner, Rhino liner.
Okay.
GM's version of Rhino lining, yeah, so, and then again, proper care, maintenance, rinse it out from time to time, it'll, should be fine for the lifespan that we have it.
Alright, awesome, thank you, Mike.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Good? Onto your next project. Nothing to report there.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna be looking at possibly shifting it around a little bit, and that's where we are. The spot where it was going to go isn't going to make sense, since we don't own the through road, that's not a road, that ever uses as a road, we don't own it, so we can't really rightfully put something on it. Really, we don't?
Nope.
We don't own it all the way through, we own it halfway.
It's hard to see on this zoning map, next.
The fridge store owns it, correct? One of the businesses?
No, um.
You'd have to get it up here and tell, it, the problem is, is that there's a platted alleyway behind railroad that goes straight down and behind, and then another one that runs, um, kinda northeast to southwest, so this has never been an actual road, it's not even labeled. So it's actually part of Zaleski's property. It just got taken. Let's put it that way, and it's been like that for a long time.
Yeah. Probably buying it wouldn't be worth it.
It's just right now, the, um, Grant and Aid Trail runs through it, so there's already been an easement, you know, for the state approved for that, it's just, it's not an actual road, city street.
There's a stop sign on it, but. What do we know?
I guess that was just.
Somebody just put it there probably.
And it hit the ground, yeah.
Yeah, kinda like there's a speed limit sign on the.
Yep.
Yeah.
Should probably remove that one, put the smaller stop signs, people know it's snowmobiles only.
So we're gonna see if we can't find a workaround and maybe slide that off the side somehow, or come up with something differently, see if we can make it work or not. Still think it'd be a nice thing to have. It's just a matter of. As a draw kinda, you almost even to help.
I think we'll find the right place, we're just gonna keep working on it.
If we can get it in there properly, it'll, it'll work out, I think we can do it. So I'll let you know when I know more on that.
Enough, it'll, it'll stay on the old business side things.
Sounds good. Seth, that.
Uh, I don't remember last time I spoke to you guys about this, but given the, given the timing of needing to have something to the legislature for twenty twenty-one by the end of January, and the enormity of what is now required by the state to have it on the ballot as a referendum, we need to prove regional significance, and I'm still working with, with Seth on that, so instead of just slapping something together and crossing our fingers and toes and hoping that this, the state legislature gives it to us, I would prefer to do a much more diligent job, turn it in at the end of January of twenty-two, so it goes in the ballot in the general in November of twenty-two. Still enough time if it gets approved in that, that process after January of next year, for it to be able to be a balloted item, so we've got the time, I'm just, I'm not gonna rush this. The requirements have changed drastically since the eighteen refer, or the eighteen vote when it was on the ballot then. So I'm gonna leave it at that.
What are we proposing as a local tax rate?
Right now, what the city's been working on, Joe, is trying to get another half, is, is to get a half percent sales tax, city sales tax, with the revenue, um, that, and I apologize, the numbers are not in front of me, but the revenue that our businesses bring in, uh, this department of revenue estimates somewhere between thirty to thirty-four thousand dollars in half percent sales tax revenue that the city could use for the street department, and a lot of that was all implemented so that we could fix infrastructure and, and on, and water and sewer as well, it just didn't pass in two thousand eighteen when it was put on the ballot then.
Uh, something Cheryl and I talked about, within the last five months or something like that, I was like, uh, if there was even a one percent sales tax, I don't think anybody would, like, no one's gonna not buy gas to Timberline because of that, or no one's gonna not.
Right.
Buy some antiques at Cheryl's store or whatever, just, you know, even if it was a one percent, you know what I mean?
Provided what the midges' sales taxes right now, it wouldn't equate that unless they get another half percent in, um, approved next year, which I think they're already trying to work on, cause they still have to pay for the Sanford Center, and they're also, I think, still trying to get a resort tax in, down there, or at least at county level, so it's never been, um, the half percent doesn't really faze many people, cause then it's just, you know, equate to whatever else the rest of the county is doing. I think the reason it didn't pass in two thousand eighteen was mainly due a part of how it shows up on the ballot.
Has to be worded a certain way.
It has to be worded that the voters approve to bond for the cost of X amount of infrastructure, and in doing so, the sales tax will pay for it, but education on that level is difficult when somebody just sees, oh, my taxes are gonna go up to pay for this, so unfortunately it didn't pass.
So it says, yeah, it says basically on the, on the ballot, my, that your property, it will be attached to your property taxes if.
Yeah, that's all they see.
If we don't see, and that's.
That's really, it's, like, really, it's, okay, so there are people that are going to come with their fish house to go up to the lake.
Yep, yes, yes.
And pay taxes.
It's not the people that live here, yep.
Because they're paying more taxes, and yes, like, if someone who lives in town goes to Cheryl's store, yes, you'll pay a half percent more, but the bulk of that, the bulk of that would be paid by people who don't live here.
Exactly, exactly. The problem, though, I think that, um, the, the community had, and voters had, was, it was an educational piece, and although at my level, I wish to be able to educate everybody that asks me, what does this mean, the day they have to vote, I, at one point when I'm changing hats from an administrator to an election judge, I can't educate these people cause I can't sway their votes, so that became an issue.
Yes, nobody can say, you, you don't get to ask questions on the ballot, nobody gets to say, hey, what does this mean?
So the City of International Falls just passed a one percent increase this past election, and that took them over a year to promote to get that passed, and they're doing it for the exact same reasons, they have large amounts of infrastructures, specifically water and sewer that need to get passed.
It's like we need to, like, get people who can influence people to put something up on, like, like have Cheryl talk about it on YouTube or something like that, so you can't, like, sway somebody, but you can be like, look at this thing on YouTube, and that, you know what I mean?
And let that people.
Look at all the possibilities that are, that could come about.
That are possibilities, yeah.
Yeah.
Or we could just stake a sign fifty feet from the bowling station.
Hundred?
I thought it was fifty.
I thought it was a hundred.
Alright, well, whatever.
You gotta get every direction, dude, that's tough, there's a lot of roads coming at you.
Great idea.
Another sign. Well, it's good to, it's good to hear from a business owner's point of, point of view on it, that, that you would be for it.
Well, yeah, I think, well, this is a great little town, it really is, and it needs to have the resources that a great little town should have, so that it can do the stuff it needs to do.
Your own prosper.
Exactly.
So that's where I'm at on that.
I'm good with it. Oh, next door?
Next door, the Commercial Structures Project, uh, it is working its way through, uh, the steps, Gale has to have a hard copy down to the state by the first, so it has to be in the mail later than Wednesday. The engineers from Windset reviewed the buildings.
I'm sorry, does that mean that we have to have it filed with the county?
No.
Oh, oh.
No, no, none of that has to be done yet. Um, the structural engineers looked at all three properties on Friday, um, and they're giving all the information to Gale for the application. A purchase agreement has been acquired with thirty, the owner of Thirty Two Main and the Development Corps, so that's a good thing, and they found out, they found some very interesting things in Thirty Two Main, the, it sounds like the, that roof is probably failing in more than one place, due in part to its close proximity to Anderson Fabrics as well, that building, their roof tilts back, and there's a, there's a small gap between that building and Thirty Two Main, and it's been draining.
Directly.
Directly onto Thirty Two Main for many years as well, so not only is it, that roof failing because of forty, um, shares of roof, but it's also failing in the southeast corner of the ceiling as well, so it's, it's moving forward, um, hope to have more for the council once the application is submitted on the first, but right now, the good thing is, is that a purchase agreement has been signed for the, the property, and that was not, um, hadn't even happened at the last council meeting yet, so.
So we'll be able to take control of all three at once?
Yes, yes. The, the third one might take a little bit more time, because the person that's claims to have possession of the deed really had like a, a witness signature of the deed holder and another person saying, I, I deed this to you. deed holder and another person saying, I, I deed this to you, but it never got transferred to the county. So the Development Corps is already pushing forward with the title company to draft a new deed. Perry Shack, the actual deed holder of Thirty-two Main, got the property on a covenants for forfeiture originally. And that would explain some of the gaps of who holds the actual deed of the property. But it's filed with the county that he is the deed holder, so I think things will move over a little bit, um, a little bit faster. The gentleman that signed the purchase agreement has been very cooperative. He's been sending all the copies he can find and all the documentation, so the Development Corps is moving this forward as fast as they can to get everything done for the application. Any questions?
Is this the immediate that we've been?
It is. It's the three parcels just between City Hall and the theater, Joe. For the most part, they all were one building at one point. They're in serious disrepair. The, the, the roof and there's so much mold in the buildings, it's, it's, it's a public hazard at this point.
Flat roof is tough. I'm, I'm new to that game as well, so it's, uh, it's tarring issues. Yeah, we're gonna have some, uh, we're gonna redo the roof above Kurt's apartment next year to, cause we've got scuppers, but then it's like downhill onto the roof from the scupper, so it's like, gotta make sure the scupper's open, but then also there's like a pool on the roof, cause it's not great, so we're gonna do foam and new roof and whatever to oh, add insulation to it and get it graded and scupper correctly. And I'm like, you know, darn it, if I never own another flat roof building again in my life, it'll be, you know, just A-OK.
Yeah, Brett is having the same problem with, um, her building. We've re-roofed the law enforcement center and we still have ice dams. It's, and it's hard to find people that write contractor to do that stuff.
Sure.
Any other questions about buildings? Onto the election.
Uh, filing was ended on Tuesday of last week and we had no one filed for the seat. So on April thirteenth, the city voters will have a ballot with, um, one line to fill in. So if you know of anyone that's going to do a write-in campaign by April thirteenth, I encourage them to do so. But right now, um, I'm not anticipating.
What, is that a Tuesday?
It is a Tuesday. Yep, yep. It always does to be that way. Yep. Yeah, I have really nothing more to tell you about that.
It's hoping somebody.
Is there any way we, can we push to, I mean, to get more people at the polls? Cause this is gonna be hard to even, I, I I remember when they did the Sunday sales thing and that was only twenty-two people voted.
Yep.
You know, so, uh.
Put all twenty-two would be, if you had twenty-two again, all twenty-two would be writing someone in, correct?
Correct.
Right? So.
Yeah.
Or a lot of people, more people sitting up there.
Yeah.
Maybe the water bill thing again, in the back of the water bill, maybe they'll put it on the pond's, uh, kiosk.
How's that a?
On the message board?
On the message board?
Is that a thing we could, I don't know, so why not?
Well, here's, I guess, and this is me thinking out loud here, here's the case. The filing period is coming gone.
Yep.
At this point, how should the city really push people to campaign for this?
And you can't put it in the paper.
Right.
And you can't put it on the market.
The voters have to be the one that are campaigning themselves. The city can't campaign for them, nor should they be spending money
Exactly.
to campaign for them.
Right.
That's what I mean. So we have to do this as our, on our own.
Just a friendly reminder that we're still having an, uh, a vote.
Yep, yep. That, that can happen.
That we can do, but we can't.
You can't vote for somebody that's not.
No, no, that's what I mean. It's just a friendly reminder that says, hey, we're still having an open voting. Please come cast your vote.
Right, word mouth.
I am still waiting to.
Anybody that actually puts in, anybody that says, write me in, and they put it on Facebook, they're gonna get it.
The question is, are they gonna accept it if they do? Because two of the four people that got written in
Good point.
at your general election, we're not going to accept that seat.
Good point.
No disrespect, but we need to find the person, the city needs to find the person that's wants to put in the time and the effort to sit on this board.
So if this gets denied again by the person who gets the most write-ins, what's our next step?
I've thought about that already as well.
I think we'd hold off and appoint.
Well, it has to be, by statute, it has to be half.
I hold another year and a half.
Fifty percent or less of the, of the term in order to appoint. So what would end up happening is the city could put it off until the two thousand twenty-one November and put it on a, on a general election then and try it again. But I keep cautioning is each time we have to hold an election, it costs the city money that isn't part of a regular election timeframe.
So we don't.
Don't encourage it. Find somebody for April.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Should we just, like, make a decision, hold off until the November?
I, no, it's already too late, Jason. It's every, the balls are in motion already. I'm sorry. You guys have approved the April thirteenth election, so that's already going forward. So what we have now is you have, you have two and a half months.
I think Jason's main question is, is if nobody takes this and the seat remains empty even after the thirteenth. What do we do then?
Then it can remain open until the next time you can hold another election.
So we don't have to have another special election?
In twenty-one, I'll consult the city attorney on that. Possibly no, cause we've made, we've made full attempt to fill it at that point. Um, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna miss it.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure either, so, um, Oliver, I still would like to have, I don't would, I don't wanna see tie votes come down to becoming a no.
I'll, I'll ask.
Should it happen? Cause it has in the past.
Alright.
We don't wanna drag it out to keep costing money either.
So we get this right.
I'll still work with Jennifer Parker. I know she and I had a long conversation after the general election about, and that this, the seat was vacant, about what that means for the city and, um, was hoping to get her on board to doing a good, um, story in the paper about it. Um, just haven't had a chance to really hook up with her. Maybe as it gets closer, but.
Okay.
Something needs to be put out there, um, for the public to hear.
Very good. Uh, new business.
Joe, you gotta use my podium. I just got it.
Yes.
I feel so happy about this. Everybody gave me crap about it.
See, there's a microphone on it too.
Yes, but I don't know if you really needed it or not. There's a little button to turn it on.
It appears to be on. That's right, so, yeah.
It's just gonna record.
So I'm, uh, I'm petitioning the, uh, the City of Black Duck for detachment on my property. I'm, oh, get over here a minute. Kind of pulling up and show you where I'm at. But basically, I'm, I'm off in Agland on the edge. I'm in a place where, you know, I kinda have this weird thing going on where my driveway actually hits the road in Summit Township. You know, about two hundred and fifty feet from Lawrence Pope's place and, and then you gotta ride on my driveway for about two-thirds of it, and then you cross over into the city. Um, and then my home is on the city, so. So I have two parcels not in the city, one parcel in the city, and I cross municipal boundaries on my driveway, which is a little, like, imagine if you're in my shoes, right? And you're like, halfway up my driveway, I switch municipal boundaries, and so I have to, you know, for my, for my home residence, right, I have to potentially deal with special assessments and this and that from both, you know, from both city and from township, that kind of thing, so. So for that reason, I'm petitioning the city for detachment. So to point to it over here, basically, here's my three parcels, here, here, and then here. And so my home is located here. And so basically, my driveway starts right over here, right? Lawrence Pope's is right here, mine's right here. You go up this edge and then cross over here and then drive all the way over here, so about, you know, like I said, probably sixty, seventy percent, I haven't exactly measured it, is, uh, is in Summit. And so obviously Summit pays for the road maintenance, you know, on this part of Beachley Road, right? And then Black Duck, I presume pays for this part all the way to the scenic on this side. And then Summit pays for the other side. And so I assume that that is paid as a ratio of, you know, Kyle for seeing grades it or whatever, right? And that it's paid as a ratio of how much Summit Township versus how much Black Duck.
Yeah, it's kind of a shared responsibility between the township, the county, and the city. You know, especially on that road. And that's mainly because of how far east it goes into the township too.
Yeah, cause it goes quite a bit past Summit Town Hall Road.
Yep. Yep, it goes to like a dead end, I think. You keep on going east, right?
Yeah, I believe so. I, I've actually never been on it past, um.
Past Summit? Yeah.
So that's my, uh, uh, I guess that's, that's my side of the petition. I'm interested to hear your guys' thoughts and.
Have you spoken to, what I'm assuming, yeah, it's, it would be Summit then, right?
So I've, I've spoken to Eldon informally. Their meeting is in March, so I haven't even submitted paperwork to them.
Okay.
Formally yet. Um, I have a verbal from them that they're gonna support it. And so chatting with, um, Star at, uh, State, she basically said, there's, there's a couple ways this can go. If both Black Duck supports it and Summit supports it, then it's easy. It's a fifty dollar administrative fee or something like that. It's done. Um, if they support it and then Black Duck doesn't support it, then I can, e- effectively then we get to decide whether you take it to court. If you take it to court, it's interesting, because I pay half the court fees, Black Duck would pay half the court fees, and it's not a whoever wins pays the other. You know what I mean? It's, it's I would pay half and you guys would pay half. Um, and then whatever happens, happens.
Right.
So that's kind of, um, kind of the path, it looks like, so depending on how it goes, so. Um, Star, when I talked to her about it, estimated the cost between four to six K out of pocket kind of thing to me.
Yeah. Somewhere between two hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the judge's travel.
Yeah, well, and the judge, we start paying him the moment they leave their house in the city.
Yep. If, if, and my conversation with her too is if that is indeed something that they end up doing in person versus over, because of COVID. Yeah, I asked her that too. I'm like, so it's COVID, so does that mean you only have an hour online? And she said, well, it really depends on the judge that you get. But yeah, um.
Obviously, you know, one thing that's been kicked around at least, um, and I don't know if it's been brought up here or not, is the idea of a rural taxing district for the, for the ag, you know, ag zone there. I guess my only thought there is that I'd kinda still rather annex out just from the perspective of if we come up with a rural taxation, where, where basically my taxes would be figured the same as if I was in Summit Township, but then
Be a lower percentage.
That would actually, it would be cool from the perspective that then the dollars would be going to Black Duck.
Yep.
That's kinda nice. But then the downside of that is that I have no, like, in Summit, I'm just another Summit taxpayer, right? I'm, I'm no different than anybody else as far as, okay, you look at Lawrence Pope next door and, okay, figure out my taxes the exact same way. Everyone in Summit Township, right, it's kind of a, you know, okay, we all pay a little bit for road maintenance, may, uh, a little bit probably, and then other than that, you take care of yourself, right? So, you know, just from the perspective of, okay, I'm on my own driveway that I put in, I have my own well and septic. You know, paid a fortune to run power all the way out there, all that kind of thing. So I really didn't get any of the, you know, like, city roads, city streets, street lamps, you know, we really haven't put a, you know, any kind of investment into my property that we're losing out on by me annexing out.
And that's, that's a very good argument. I have heard it from other larger cities too, to, but Midgee's one of them, where there are some smaller areas of, uh, that large city that are in the same boat, where they don't get initial city services because they don't live in town. My, my biggest concern, and obviously I don't get about here, is that your, your home parcel is on the municipal boundary. And if that were to be detached, then where's to say the cards don't keep falling? And what does that end up happening for the city in the long run? That's why, um, bringing up a rural taxing district may or may not help, but it may also be something to keep as the city, to keep that agricultural property in the city, but also to still have some folks that want two to three acres around their house and can afford to be out there with their own water sewer, water and sewer, and still be within that city. Granted, we don't have any initial commercial development or residential development down in that, in that section of the city, and that's one of the arguments for and against, uh, a detachment. But, um, again, it's an agricultural zone, so you gotta look at it in two different ways.
When was the, when did it become part of the city? Do we know that? When was it annexed in originally?
I would have to go way back. Do you have your, do you have your, your, uh?
Is that a?
That I don't know, but what I do know is that, um, so this little spot right here, this, this little spot, that's just.
Cemetery.
That's the ancient cemetery, right? So the reason this is named Stoner Lake is a history lesson is because the guy who was the city planner, who drew this all out and who actually drew the plot map for the cemetery was named Stoner, so it has nothing to do with, you know, more modern ideas about why the lake might be named Stoner.
Well, that's, that's why we can't have Stoner Memorial Drive.
Oh, oh, because we.
We lose, we lose all our, we lose ours. We lost all our street signs.
Can we split a lake between two counties?
So interestingly, it is not a lake.
Yeah.
Um, so, so what's interesting about my spot there is that, um, this is a wetland. It's called Stoner Lake, has been for a hundred years, but as far as the city, state, whoever DNR is concerned, it's a wetland. So technically, it's, it's interesting, cause I own that, I own, you know, probably half the lake. But Minnesota, lakes are public, right? So technically, I own the dirt underneath the lake.
Yep.
And if Christina's out there in a boat, I can't, hey kid, get off my yard, which near as I can tell, like, half of the reason for owning land is to be able to yell, hey kid, get off my yard. That and to be able to build whatever you want, right? So, so I'm not exactly sure what the purpose of, of me owning that is, other than that, you know, like, my, my next door neighbor Brian, right? The Dome Myers a long time ago, right? You can see what they did here, right? They,
Yep.
they unplotted, they made this a separate parcel.
Yep.
And then quit paying the taxes on it.
Yep.
So then my buddy Brian bought this piece, right, so we could be neighbors. And so he buys this piece. But then he doesn't have waterfront property, right? So then this got gobbled up by real estate investors, so then he had to kind of per acre pay through the nose to get it back so that he could then have waterfront, because it's like, why don't you, like, if you're gonna make it, you know, carve off the water section and, you know what I mean? That way you can still claim it's waterfront.
Yeah, and I, and I, I'd be very curious to what happened when that lower section actually became that weird kind of a piece of property, because when you divide and separate, you gotta have the city on board. And I'm very curious to see how that was allowed at that time.
Sure.
You know, I mean, if you.
Well, you don't know if Dome Meyer was on the council or how he made that happen.
You're, you know, you're spot on.
But, but it's, um, basically, so the way it works out, like there, it just looks like land near the lake, but it's actually technically the cattails, right? So basically, he said, okay, the cattail's in the water, I don't wanna pay taxes on it, so he just parceled it off, quit paying the taxes on it. It got state repossessed for, you know, tax delinquency, and then the real estate investor forty minutes away bought it up and paid taxes on it for a couple years.
Do you have your abstract on your, on your parcel?
Um, on mine?
Mm-hmm.
You mean the, um, that's the, the number on it right there, the eighty-one?
Oh, not the, not the, not the tax. Oh, not the, not the, not the tax parcel ID, but the actual abstract. The abstract is, you know, like your book, the history of the parcel itself, who owned it and everything else. From the day it was actually, uh, became an actual just parcel description.
I don't think I actually, I don't think I have that. It'd be cool to have that.
Yeah, most, I mean, and a lot of times when the title work is done, that's something that changes hands from owner to owner, and then it's updated.
Well, it may have gotten, it may have gotten mucked up because, so a little bit, it's interesting how I came by my parcel, right? Because I was planning to retire here. So since I was planning to retire here, I actually bought my three parcels with my IRA. Because you can do that. Interestingly, it's perfectly legal to buy land with your IRA. You just can't do anything, right? So literally, like, you can't even have a picnic on it. You can, like, walk on it and say, yep, nobody's land grabbing on my IRA, but you can't do anything. So, so I was gonna retire up here, but then I decided, uh, like, why wait? Like, we really want to build there and not somewhere else. So then I had to distribute it and pay the taxes on it. So the interesting thing is that technically, when I first bought it, it wasn't me, it was a different legal entity that was my IRA, that's not me, that I control, that bought it. And then I had to, like, distribute it, pay the taxes. And so then it shifted from my IRA to me, right? So it kind of took an interesting double hop there. And so, so even if the, even if the transfer of documents, if that would have happened from like a normal sale, it might have been that that then went to my IRA company in Colorado. And that then when it got deeded over to me when I, you know, deeded it and then paid the taxes and whatever, um, that maybe it can take that jump.
I got a curious question for you.
Sure.
Why don't you go the other way and me annex you one?
Well. You gotta look at it, right? I mean, so where I'm at on the road, I'm already in Summit. It's two hundred and fifty feet from Lawrence Pope's, right? And so that, that is, we could, we could annex two parcels in, or I can annex one out, right? But you look at the city of Black Duck and you look at the parcels around my house, right? And my house more closely resembles everything else in Summit, right? Where there's no city water, no city sewer, no asphalt roads, no river maintenance, no new trucks to buy, you know, all of this kind of thing. And so if you look at my property, and I, and that's kind of what I did, is I said, hmm, this kind of looks more like Summit Township to me than it does Black Duck. Which is, you know, so, you know, like I said, okay, we could come up with an ag taxing district and we could annex it in. But then who's to say that, you know, that next year or the year after, that a different city council comes in and doesn't say, okay, well, you know, taxation rates are this or that or the other thing, right? Whereas if I'm in Summit, I'm just another taxpayer, right? Like, it's, it's no, no different than anybody else there. So for that reason, that's why it's appealing for me to just blend in in Summit Township versus being, uh, in Black Duck where I'm, where I get to be part of things, right? Like, I could, I could do things like, yes, I can be on the fire department now, but I could serve in other ways, right? Living in Black Duck that I can't, not in Black Duck, but just this whole business of, of being of being not one of, of being not the normal path. Does that make sense?
So you don't want to follow the rules and regulations that are set forth by Black Duck? You'd rather do it by the township?
It's not as much the rules and regulations, it's really more that, you know, if you're just like everybody else, you kind of know what to expect because you're gonna be treated just like everybody else. Does that make sense? Whereas, you know, if you're different, it's like, okay, well, we're talking about, maybe we might propose a special taxing district, maybe, right? And then we might maybe change that later, right? Or, you know, so it's just that, okay, I'm kind of out in the weeds and I'm different, right? Like, it's not like my building here on Main Street, right, where it's on Main, it uses city water, it uses city sewer. Um, it uses, you know, all of the, um, you know, snow removal and all those kinds of things. It all applies. And so it makes sense to be a part of the group and contribute to it and get back from it because, because up at, on Main Street, I'm just like everybody else.
Just from my recollection, Christina and Max, you might know this a lot more than I do. Do we have residents inside of Black Duck that are using their own city, their city wa, or non-city water and city sewer?
We actually do.
Yes, we do.
Um.
I'm one of them.
And Rasmussen's just built a house up on Crosswell and Carlson. Um, and the reason they did that is because that main ends at the end of Carlson over by Scott and Jackie Lagoon. And doesn't go north yet. Um, we have, we own, gosh, Mike, help me remember how many feet between Carlson and Crosswell before it goes into township? Eight hundred feet?
Oh, I don't even know if it's that far. It's not.
So until, until, uh, the city can extend that main and have services on that side, which obviously Rasmussen's and, um, uh.
Didn't want to wait.
Couldn't, yeah, do to build their home, they were granted the, you know, the variance to have their own water and sewer. Their septic. Just, just as we did for Cheryl and Joe.
And fourth, and on Fourth Street, the end down there that doesn't have.
Yeah, actually, we didn't even have to do a variance because we were in the agricultural zone. We already knew there was no services there. There's nothing close, so there was no variance needed for that. But yeah, Fourth Street, Southeast.
And when I was, when that was, mine was agricultural at the time also. It had been rezoned since.
And now it's residential.
So just, just to mention something, he wants to be annexed out. Okay, what happens? Will you approve that? Then the friend of yours, Brian, that has that lot or that zoning, he wants that same thing, right?
He couldn't. It's a slightly different situation because you can argue that you've been maintaining his road, or you can't really argue that you've been maintaining mine. You know, so, but that is a possibility, right? I mean, in order to be able to even file this application, you have to be on the border of the municipality, right? You can't have somebody in the middle of it file this as far as I know, if I'm correct. So it really is a.
You're tipping away at edges, however, and the borders.
He would be the border if we did it for him, right?
That's correct.
And he's already the border now? Right?
Oh, right.
Yeah, he is.
On two edges, he's the corner.
On two edges, yep.
Oh, sure, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it, it, it plays for anybody on that street though, I mean, it's.
So I have a question. Um, your driveway, uh, north of Beechley, does it get plowed all the way to your house by you?
Um, so.
From Beechley to your home?
From Beechley to my home.
Beechley, yeah, to your home. Do you plow it?
By me.
You get it plowed by you, okay.
It's been an interesting learning experience because I've got a UTV with a, I've got a cannon defender that's enclosed and heated, so that's nice because it's cold up here, right? Um, and I've got a thrower for the front of it, so that's cool. It's about sixty inches wide or whatever, so I can get down and back. But then I've got crushed on the driveway, right? And if you, as it turns out, if you fill up your thrower with crushed granite, you're gonna break a shirp in. So, so I bought some extra shirpins and I've tried not to fill up my.
Or you wait till the snowpack is thick enough that you don't, you don't drive it down. Yep.
Yeah, it's a, it's an interesting game because, uh, you know, I can, I can have it ride up just a little bit and then I don't pick up stuff. But then still, you know, as it undulates or whatever, you tend to, you can still clip a little bit, so it's. You know, I'm, I'm getting better at it, but you know, generally if I, you know, I, I'm not going very fast and I definitely ease off the throttle if I start to hear things that sound like not snow.
The ping 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 noises?
Yeah, there was something I knew that I had to get after myself because I was like, hmm, my driveway is, you know, three quarters a mile divided by two, so, you know, what is that? Almost a tenth or so. And, uh, it's like, uh, that's gonna be expensive if I have somebody plowing it all the time, so. And if we had snow like last year, plowing it, where would you pile it up for crying out loud, right?
Keep pushing that question, I'm pushing it.
So what are the taxes? That's the question everybody's gonna ask, right? That's where we're at. How much money are we losing?
If your house, if your house is done, you guys have moved in, right?
It's done, we've moved in, yeah. Um, I, let's see. I guess we can look it up and see what my taxes on that parcel. I don't do longhand. What did I tell you?
So you don't know what you need a year for taxes?
No, just because it's the three different parcels, so.
You don't like know how much you can this parcel add a parcel?
No, I, I certainly have bills for it and stuff, I just don't move it off the top of my head. Just kind of every six months I write a couple of checks or whatever.
Understandable. You find anything max?
That parcel you're talking about is, like, is it almost twenty-three acres?
Hey, man, I can tell you.
Right.
Twenty-two point one.
Yeah.
I guess that's what it says on there, right?
Nine seven, yeah. It's close to, I told you, twenty-three acres, so.
Put a ring on?
It's twenty-two. But then it's interesting, right? Because it's, you know, this, this picture maybe shows you a little better than, uh, than that one. But if you look at the, the amount that is above ordinary high water line, right? Like, it's not shaving that, uh.
Cattail line.
Yeah, yeah, the cattail line, right? Like, there's. I've actually thought about going across the lake over there because apparently I own a couple of trees on this side of the lake over by, um, oh, what's his name? The guy who owns this.
Oh, Marine?
Yeah, by Rich Marine over there. Yeah, I've thought about going over there and just, you know, I don't know, putting up a gear stand or something like that on some tree that I own over there. But in truth, I haven't been across over there to see my one tree that I own, so.
We said Summit's meetings is in March.
I believe it's in March, uh, I think that's what all this is.
Market value of nineteen thousand one hundred?
Your house?
That's probably just the land prior to the house being built, though. Yeah, because I doubt the assessor's finished it.
When, when did you, uh, put your house up?
Um, my house has been in construction for the sixteen months prior to October third.
That's probably why we can't find it.
So that's, yeah, but you just seen this land.
Right.
It all goes off of square footage of the house? For the property taxes?
That's a calculation that's for the assessor stone in Beltran County.
I think I have an assessor statement I can probably send to you or whatever.
And anytime a person applies for a land use permit within the city, if it's got any values on it at all. Because the Beltran County Act is our assessor. Every fall, all of our land use permits go down to the county, so they utilize that. If they haven't been able to get to every township within the county to look at every entity and structure and land to see if there's any improvements. They've used that from our municipality to assist with that land values and structure values. So I know that they've gotten Willhenny's, um, permits from us because that was in nineteen when you guys were here. Yep.
Is this not updated through their, Beltran's, uh, GIS?
And then we yearly, they do that, right?
Uh, I send them the permits yearly, yes, Sheldon, but they don't always look at every township and city, um, every single year. They do their board of adjustments every year, um, to discuss it with the landowners, but that doesn't mean they change everything each year. Like, if you added, you know, two thousand square feet to your home this year, they may not be able to see that until the following year if you weren't. If you're, let's say, like, I'm in Heinz Township, they just looked at our house last year, they probably won't look at it again for another two years. They can't get around to all the townships in order to do so. Your staff isn't big enough.
Okay, well.
What are the questions you guys have for Joe?
I don't have any.
So, just to, just to remind the board that because it's a work session, you can't really take action on, on their requests.
No voting tonight, but we could possibly.
Put it on the ballot in February. Put it on the agenda, I'm sorry, not the ballot. Wow, sorry.
We can put it on the agenda for February, February eighth. Joe, is that soon enough?
Yeah, I, I think that's when it has to happen for state statute, right?
Yeah, yeah. Once it's, once it's been heard.
Sure.
We have exonerated days that, um, the board has to take action.
So February eighth will be a additional fun.
And I would encourage the board, if they have any other additional questions, to reach out to Joe between now and then as well.
I'd be happy to chat with him.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm good for right now, Joe.
Sounds good.
I can honestly tell you how, nothing against you personally.
Sure.
I honestly tell you that I, I'm not a big fan of the unannexing property.
Sure.
Just so, I, I feel like I should at least say what I'm thinking here, so.
No, that's fair. And, and I can, you know, obviously I didn't come tonight expecting the city to throw about it. We appreciate that, so.
Nor did you, nor did you come to pick a fight. I, that's, we, we get.
Well, and, and, you know, whether I annex out or not, you know, I will still be a, still be involved here as firefighter, right? Still serving that way because it's been, honestly, one of, um.
Well, I, you.
A great honor in my life, honestly. So I plan to continue that way. I also plan to continue owning property on Main Street and contributing that way. So I, like, I'm gonna be around and involved either way, so.
When you first came in, when we were talking earlier and you said what a delightful community Black Duck is, and now it's let me out.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think it's five minutes. Five miles, five minutes.
Five miles, yeah.
Five miles. No, it is, um, it is a delightful community and it's, it's an interesting thing, right? Because so, you know, my wife, right?
Yes.
Chappies, right? Off Highway One.
Yep.
Has a Black Duck mailing address, right? Has considered herself her whole life to be from Black Duck. Interestingly, has never lived in Black Duck proper since we moved here in twenty nineteen. So her whole life, she said she's from Black Duck, never having actually been a resident of Black Duck, right? So there's, so we have a bit of a unique thing going on here where we're from Black Duck, even though we're not, for a pretty wide area around Black Duck, right? And so there's, so, so given that, it's like, okay, if, if my wife, her whole life has been from Black Duck, apparently whether she's annexed in or out.
She's still from Black Duck.
You still get to be from Black Duck, right? Um, and so it's really just a question of, you know, from that perspective, whether it makes sense to be in or out of Black Duck from a, from a which township I'm in perspective. But, like I said, this is a great little town. I love being a part of it, and I will continue.
Yeah, I don't have any questions for.
Thanks again, Joe. Jase?
I think you should stay on and sit in that seat right up there.
Exactly.
I've not had the whole time.
Boy, that's a new business Jase wanted to bring up.
It's the most passion I've heard about it, right?
Well, this is.
Except for one, maybe.
Well, it's the wrong kind of caption, maybe, but. Well, this is, this is a new community. And a lot of people would add, a lot of people would say, you're nuts, like, you lived in Colorado, why did you live in Black Duck?
Oh, it's always different on the other foot.
And, yeah, the answer is, it's, uh, a lot of people are too close to see what a remarkable little thing is going on. You know, in terms of what Black Duck is, what have they had us offer, I mean, to be, you know, Cheryl and I always wanted to live in the country in Colorado. When we moved there, five acres of trees, unimproved, no electric on it, no nothing, five acres of trees was two hundred grand. And that's pine trees, where you gotta mitigate them all the way up, because if you don't, and a fire comes through, it's gonna burn the whole thing to the ground, right? So that was two hundred grand, and then when we left, two acres of trees was two hundred grand. And then, and remember, this is in Colorado, so you're not digging a hundred and fifty foot well like I had to dig, right? You're digging a thousand, you know what I mean? And then on top of it, you're, you're not, you know, I'm twenty-five minutes from Chevy, right? In Colorado, I would have been twenty minutes from a gas station, you know, that kind of thing, so the fact that I'm two miles outside of town and I can grab food at Timberline and go to a movie when we're not drowning in COVID, right? And I've got a grocery store nearby and all that.
Right.
It's really, really cool, I even compare it to, you know, my sister-in-law lives in Climax, right?
Oh, yep.
And, you know, they got a littler school than we do there, they got a bar, a gas station, and that's it, right? You got a lot more than a bar and a gas station, so.
And everybody from Climax was either going to Grand Forks or they're going to Foston, and why go to Foston when you're closer to Grand Forks? I think people's perspectives are exactly what Joe says, you get so close to it, the magnifying glass is all you can look through.
Right. Here's the thing I would say, just as a dollars and cents kind of thing, about this, just to keep in mind, as you decide which way to vote on, you know? If you decide to oppose it, there's a certain amount of, then, then I can do math, right? I can say, okay, this is what my taxes are gonna be in Summit, this is what my taxes are gonna be in here, here's how long my buyback is, right? But if you decide to oppose it and you do a rural taxing district and you make it so my taxes would be the same as if I was in Summit, then suddenly you made it really hard for me to decide that I wanna spend four grand to go to court, which may or may not pay off, and spend four grand of, of the town's money, right, going to court? When, okay, at least from a dollars and cents, yes, I still have to deal with the, I'm crossing municipal boundary on my driveway, which is annoying, but, like, if there's no taxation difference, that makes it a little harder to make that argument that I should pay four grand and go to court, right? So, please consider that as you decide what to do about this.
Good, guys?
Good.
All right. Thanks again, Joe.
Thank you. How can I say?
You too.
Thanks, Joe. And just so the, the board is aware, the rural taxing district I'm looking into with Beltrami County right now, to see if it's something we can do for our ag, um, property owners, because you have to prove that it's something that does not have any, you know, commercial or future development, and that it's there to sustain itself the way it is. What it would essentially do is it would give those property owners a lower percentage tax rate than Black Duck proper, basically. Your industrial, your business in your main residential area, um, versus the parts that have no services whatsoever to the city. Um, it would pose a good argument for those folks that have, there's some folks that have been on scenic for years that are like, you know, when we used to have a street lighting fee, and they're like, I don't know why I'm paying this, I don't even live in town, I have my own street light that I pay Beltrami Electric, and that's one of the reasons the city got rid of that street lighting, um, fee, but.
I could make the same argument.
Make it.
That I live on a street where I do not have water or sewer, yet I pay taxes.
I don't live up here, but I think you guys need to look at that.
My driveway.
All my service they're providing.
Blowed by me.
Yeah, I, Sheldon was saying about, you start on the end and you work your way in, but as you work in, you're gonna all of a sudden be providing services of all roads, right? Or streetlights, or water and sewer, so I mean.
I.
You're not providing any services to somebody.
How long ago was it that we just unannexed the last piece of property?
Lundberg's had a bigger argument based on the statute. Which I.
Then you don't want to have that domino effect with the other residents living in that little community, because they wanna get an, on annex, you know what I mean? Then you start on the jump or the tick ball instead of three.
And depending on how much his property is assessed with his new players, it could be from, someone from a nineteen thousand dollar property could jump up to.
It's right now looking at forty-two hundred dollars, and that's without it being finished, according to Beltrami County. Their two thousand twenty-one proposed taxes are four thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars, and of that twenty-one fourteen is for the city of Black Duck. The rest of it goes to the county, the school district, and.
Twenty-one fourteen, right?
Two thousand.
One fourteen.
Yep.
One hundred and fourteen dollars.
So he did pay in court, it takes two years to come back, but we still be getting that property. Grow, not shrink.
I mean, just looking at the other county versus, or Heinz versus Black Duck, it's like twenty dollars more, or it's twenty dollars, we pay twenty dollars more. He pays twenty, twenty to thirty dollars more in taxes for Black Duck versus Heinz. So I mean, it's, we could match almost, almost the same assessments as they would, I mean, if that's what's gonna keep them in.
But again, they're looking for a decision.
Right, but then again, is he still gonna be?
And we don't know that we can.
Right. I mean, is, is he just don't wanna pay the levies that are coming up, you know, is, does he not wanna pay the higher property taxes to help out the school systems, help out the police, but?
I mean.
Well, the school district, the school district levies will be completely separate, if we're just looking at the city of Black Duck levy, that, that home, that property's gonna pay is twenty-one fourteen right now, and that's still under construction, and their home is not finished, according to the county. So that's gonna continue to go up once it's reviewed and finished, according to the county assessor, so, yeah, um.
So twenty-one, you know, I'm paying seventeen for a hundred thousand dollar house and property, so this is going way up.
So I, I did have a conversation with your city attorney about this prior to knowing that Joe wanted to remove it from the regular, um, council meeting, because he couldn't attend, and one of the things Joe Langle stressed was to ensure that the council knows the factors of subdivision three, which I've written in the slot for you guys, upon completion of the hearings, and I'm gonna say, just a second. The property, okay, the owner said the property is a rural in character and not developed for urban residential, commercial, or industrial purposes, that the property is within the boundaries of the municipality and it butts a boundary, that the attachment would not reasonably affect the symmetry of the detaching municipality, and that the land is not needed for reasonably anticipated future development, this is what the city has to prove. Uh, in making the findings, the chief administrative law judge shall consider all applicable comprehensive plans, land use regulations, and land use maps of the affected municipality, town, and county that have been adopted at the time the petition was submitted. Then the chief administration law judge may deny the detachment on findings that the remainder of the municipality cannot continue to carry on functions of government with an undue hardship. The chief administrative law judge may decrease the area of property to be detached and may include only a part of the proposed area to be detached. And then it goes on to other things, so read through this as you consider your arguments, right now, you know, they, both sides have reasonable arguments.
It's fifty-fifty.
Right.
It's a coin flip.
Like the property? Or is it over by Anderson's, is it Oscar?
Yep.
Right?
Oscar.
We still plow that, even though it's still Heinz?
You mean over here?
No, not Oscar.
South of Oscar?
Not Oscar, um, behind Jehovah Witnesses.
The Kingdom Hall, that's up here.
Yep.
So that's, the Kingdom Hall is right, it's right here.
The one that, right, the one that washed away, the road that washed away.
Development that goes back.
Crosswell, this, that's this development here.
We plow that?
So.
That's Crosswell.
We work with the county on that, and we plow up there, and in return, they plow Beachley.
Yep.
Because we're never down that way, because it's way down there, do anything else down there? So they plow Beachley, they take care of Beachley for us, basically, we plow Crosswell up over there.
Right, and.
So it's a trade-off.
It's, it's a trade-off, and most townships contract with the county for plowing.
It's a, it's a handshake, talk about it every year, hey, you wanna do that again, we'll do this, yep, it's just easier for both.
So I, I guess my question would be is what would it take for a pickup truck to run down his road to get to his side on Black Duck on his property?
Oh, you mean if we offered to plow his driveway?
Correct.
Well, I mean, it's not that far down there, it's just, we don't plow anyone's personal driveway.
And, and Jason, to the same argument, Summit's not gonna plow his road either.
Okay.
If, if the annexation, if the detachment happened, they won't plow it either.
Okay.
For us, it's due for one, due for everyone.
Yep.
Understand.
Yep, and I've spoken to the clerk of Summit, and they specifically said that wouldn't be a road that they'd end up plowing for him. So honestly, I don't even think that that's I don't even think that that's a weight in the scale of this, um, my, my gut and.
What, what does upset reasonable symmetry mean to you? Because that's what the judge is gonna get to look at and go, what does reasonable symmetry mean to me?
Where's the parallel line in between everything?
You know, do we have to make, do we have to make a little notch? Or do we get to keep a nice straight line?
On our property.
Correct.
That's what that means.
I mean, if.
Look at the north end of town.
I was just gonna say, if a judge looks at it now, he's gonna say it's not symmetry anyways.
Or is it according to, like, for him to access his home, he has to access it through the county, or the township.
No, when they're talking reasonable symmetry, they're talking the squareness of your border, essentially, at that.
I know, exactly.
Then we, we can't prove that we're square as it is.
No, because he could use, well, I don't know if he's really gonna use it or not, but they can definitely use Black Duck collision as an issue.
Yeah, where we literally go around it.
Yeah.
So we obviously have no problem doing it.
No.
But we've also annexed in properties to make it unsymmetric, you know, without symmetry too. So all of the property down by Mac Properties that I think he has here was never in.
But that's not, to me, that's not what.
I don't think that's.
When you're looking at the paper, when you read that rule, would not unreasonably affect the symmetry.
I don't think it's unreasonable.
What's not unreasonable, him leaving or us wanting to keep?
The symmetry, that is unreasonable. I know what's gonna happen, and I.
We can take this to court, and I think we're gonna lose.
You really?
But what I want.
I think it would. I think it would absolutely, he's got, you have pieces coming off his driveway, your county coming off his driveway, I don't think you guys have a chance.
I think that's, I think that's a determining factor right there.
If, if he was city property, damped or his property, his driveway, I think you'd be able to keep him, but I think.
Like, your place is.
Yeah, but from going from one to ours, it's gonna be the issue.
Your place, the whole new way in is off the city broke, right? Whereas his, he's, he can come in off the county, his driveway is over there, we have absolutely nothing, I think there's to hold him. He's got two pieces outside of it, he's got more than a good argument, I think.
That's what I'm leaning on.
So just for perspective for the board, I asked the county.
Do, do I like it? No, I don't.
What the difference of the values would be from Summit's tax rates to the city's tax rates, and obviously, we know going into this, the city's is gonna be higher, but if they were to annex, estimated taxes they pay to Summit total would be twenty-eight, twenty-six, so it would cut in half.
But then if you. So does a judge look at that and say, hey, you know what?
No, that's not part of, it's not part of the statute.
The only thing you're looking at is to bail on this city?
I don't, no, because the judge will have to hold up the statute.
But if a guy lets him do it, then, like I was asking earlier, his surrounding neighbors.
I think you're watching puzzle piece, I think you're watching the second domino right now.
Come in and say, well, I would like to do that too.
Yep, it's, it's the undue hardship that the, the city would have probably the biggest, um, foothold on this is what's, what's gonna be the biggest hardship on the city if this detaches? Is the future potential detachment on top of that, and the levy going down further and further, or, excuse me, getting spread out to less and less. That's the biggest hardship the city's gonna see, is all of a sudden now we're getting this great development, and we have a beautiful home being built inside our municipal boundary, our tax levy's going up, we're gonna be able to provide more services, regardless of where that service is going, and now we're gonna get it taken away from us. They, they're building a half million dollar home on that parcel, you guys.
You had to figure your property value was going to go up.
That's why he wants to go pay taxes, but he was talking about, he doesn't mind coming to town to pay taxes.
I, and I get it, it's a fair argument, it's fair for everybody, right? It's always down to the dollar amount, but.
So we could pay six grand and.
Potentially.
Or you can come to a deal.
All right, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is how?
So, so this is, this is why Star from the state has put in front of me the potential of looking into the rural taxing district, large, lots of larger cities have them, some cities don't, I talked to Leah today, and she said, there's a lot of places in Bemidji, they pay the taxes regardless, and they don't have any of the services. They don't have a rural taxing district. But some cities do. Now, I don't know how all of, all of Bemidji is zoned, but all of that ag zone, half of that stuff is undevelopment, can't even be developed anyway, so it has no plan in place, because it's all too wet. How many homes are in that area, a dozen at best?
Well, if you look at it, a dozen people wanna get out.
That's what I, my argument is.
Right.
You can only get out if you're on the border, other than him, there are only, but that border too, you come in every time you trip away at it.
He leaves, his neighbor has the same option, he leaves, his next neighbor has the same option.
But, you know, if you go back to why, nobody wants to see him leave, but if you go back to why our, some of our opinions, you're gonna lose it in court, eventually, let's go to court, because we're not gonna lose this one, and that ends the domino. You know, eventually, you're gonna have services, they're gonna come in on city streets, whatever it may be, that gives you a foothold, but when they're coming in on county, you don't wanna see him go, I get, I agree, but you look at, they'll come into a lot of them.
Yeah, but the attorney says, had told me, just from looking at what he says, that he doesn't think it would be difficult for Joe to succeed if he pushed it, the question is, will he push it? And he just said it tonight, he knows exactly what the arbitration's gonna cost, and I believe he would probably be, it would be a drop in bucket for him to be able to fight it, or to be able to fight.
It's gonna cost him six grand, and he's gonna save how much, two grand a year.
Yeah, I think he will push it.
Two years, just us.
To push it.
After three years, he's saving money.
Yeah.
Of course, he's gonna go after it.
Yeah.
So how fast do we have to offer up a different taxing district?
I don't know enough about it yet, I've only talked to Leah, and I need to talk to Tony Treat, because I don't even know if the county allows it. They're the ones that take care of all of our negotiations.
That's not even, to me, then, that, at this point, that's not even an option.
Because it's too little, too late.
Because it's too, we don't even have that to offer on the table. It's either yes or no.
Right now.
Yeah, we can't really make a promise for something that hasn't been started yet.
You only have two weeks to look into it. That's too, too little, too late.
Right. And I don't even know the proper steps to do it. I've just recently been able to hold the statute and look at it.
To me, he seems rather reasonable. If you could find something out, or if you guys could come up with something, approach him with, we're trying to work on this, will you work with us here?
Yeah, how long will you be willing to wait?
Maybe he'd be willing to.
Right.
Is he even able to after filing the position, uh, the petition, and now we've, we've heard it?
And we gave him the deadline of February eighth.
We have to make a decision.
So, there is, there is a timeline, yes. And, but he can withdraw it.
Levy year.
Okay. So, he can push it back another month so we can get more technology for the...
We can't do it, he has to pull it.
So, could you reach out to him and ask him? Or would it? Or would it come from Matt's?
I mean, he was basically saying, if we could make this, you know, even up so that the taxes aren't so different.
If you, what do you say, there's a dozen in there? You do it for one, you gotta do it for dozens, you're probably gonna lose more money doing it for a dozen, how was it in agriculture? Then you're gonna lose just like, oh, you're not gonna get a dozen people in agricultural zones saying, I wanna get out too, and going through the process he's going through. If you drop an agricultural zone, you're gonna lose more by taxing all of them at a lower rate than just let them go.
Because do who else, how they are, and hope that there's four left.
But if you let one go, do you have that domino effect then? I mean, all the time, taxes have to go for a bit.
Yeah, but do you...
They're gonna end up paying more taxes on the property deal with any.
Right, but do we have to give them to the twelve if they're not asking for it?
That's what I'm saying. Well, you'd have to do the lower tax rate if you decided to do that.
Yeah, you'd have to do it. You'd, you'd have to establish the, the district by, um, the property, by parcel.
So, that's why I don't want any of it, but that's what I was just saying. Say there's eight of them in there, then you have to bore eight of them, where there's not eight people right here complaining about it.
Yeah, we would lose a lot more.
Should just be kind of nice to have a little more time on that. But we ain't, we're out of two weeks.
Well, technically, you have like thirty days once the state receives the petition.
So, we can push it back to the next month again?
No, this, no, no, because he's turned it in. The, the law jud, the, the, Starr Holman, who works for the law judge for the detachment, once she's received the paperwork, that's when the clock starts ticking.
You gotta figure out the...
You have to make a decision if you're gonna allow the detachment or not.
Let's come back to this if we can. If you, if you, we can come back to this if we want to before we leave this evening. Jason, was there something you wanted to bring up to us tonight?
I'm just gonna touch on it. I'm looking at, I'm putting more people on our roster right now, so. Uh, hoping in the near future, we're gonna have one running around and another one getting trained up. So, Andy's still off for paternity leave. We're doing the best we can, and we're doing pretty good coverage, so, with what we have. Doesn't hurt us a darn bit to take on more. Some classes, classes pretty much not. Winter coat, so all of the classes are one. So, that's pretty darn good for long-term.
Considering the trading levels, right?
So, that's pretty cool, and it's just good news, that's all. So, just keeping a loop on the line.
Good?
I wasn't long enough to break.
I'm just trying to speed her up for you guys.
Yeah, we know. Ah, man. Yeah, that is a valid point, though. I mean, one versus the other.
Well, I'm looking at the parcel map here.
Yeah, yeah. Then you got the business owner on the corner.
On a deal.
Search to wrap around.
Yeah, we potentially lose a lot more.
Right, that's what I was thinking. Nick.
Yeah, you had to vote on it today, but how would you go?
How would you go?
Alright, you know what? Part of me says dig in, dig in my heels and...
Pray for the best.
Try it, but the other part just says, cut your losses.
I mean, can the city afford six thousand dollars out of pocket right now to fight this?
Uh, the city really can't budget for legal fees because we don't know when the heck things are gonna come up, Jason, so you would afford it regardless. It depends on how much
Good point.
the city wants to save.
For legal fees?
No, just, you know, how many properties you wanna keep inside the city. If you want, if the, if the board is in agreement to keep this parcel and to fight for it, then fight for it. If you're gonna give up, then give up.
Further down the road, how many more parcels are you gonna lose then?
The thing is, though, I mean, you guys keep saying that, he's got two pieces that are joining him that are outside of the limit. That is going to be the difference with him. But the other people that they don't have land outside, they really don't have anything to stand on.
That was his, well, it was his choice to buy land.
Right, no, I get that, yep. Totally agree. I'm just saying that I think that's where his biggest win for himself is. My minds are ticking the same way, but I don't think that the judge isn't gonna look at that. They don't get to look at the numbers.
No, they don't. They don't.
So, it's just gonna be, why you wanna leave, here's the reasons why.
And does it support the, and does it support...
You notice, not a single reason brought to the council by Joe was financial.
Because he knew what he was talking about.
There are a few people that are gonna go through the steps of taking, taking you guys to court. But if he does, he takes you to court, and he wins, anybody else that's serious about it, hey, here's another six grand. It doesn't necessarily say it's gonna stop the domino effect. If you guys go to court and you lose, other one might follow, if someone's serious, they're gonna follow suit the same way, take you to court, and make you pay it again, and maybe lose again, and take you to court. I, I don't think you should worry about the domino effect as much as maybe you're thinking about first.
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of places down in Bemidji that have been through this with the city.
Yeah, my mom, one of them, he tried to take him to the city and he lost.
Yep.
Yeah, I say reset if I...
But that annexation, northern?
He has his own water sewer and everything.
It, it happened for a very long time.
A lot of people took Bemidji to court.
Court, yep.
And it was their loss and then our gain for when, or when the taxes got up because of buildings. That's how I understand that, yeah. I just don't see why a guy who claims to be community minded wants to leave the community, but still have... The other thing, you know, I thought about while he's talking, is he is a business owner, owning a business on Main Street. That doesn't, has to stay on Main Street. I mean, that can rouse a little bit too. I, I feel reasonable both ways. I agree. I don't think, I don't, it's just seeing him go too. But if, like, in my line of work, if you don't think prosecution can happen, you can't bring it in front of a judge. If you don't think you're gonna win this, why are you gonna spend the money and burn a bridge and a business owner in downtown too? I don't, it's the most painful.
Before, you know, we've had, you know, Kevin Beck lived in town and had his businesses, and Andy sat on this board, and he had to make decisions for both sides many, many times. But there's a lot of business owners that didn't live in town. Or the other way around, they did, and their business was out of town, so I don't know. I made the statute copy for you guys to read, you know? I'll have the resolution draft on the agenda for February eighth for you to consider.
You're gonna have one either way.
Um, well, honestly, that, it's a pretty easy resolution for me to draft. It gives you a yes or a no kind of thing here. Supports or opposes?
Well, that's, that's...
That's it.
That's...
You either support or you oppose it, and I'll have the draft there for you.
Anybody got anything else for this evening?
Do not.
I would move to adjourn.
Is that a motion? Are you asking for a motion? I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Turn that off.